We thank you for the city of Benita Springs and we love it and want to make it the greatest place of all to live. I pray now for these, the leaders of our city, that you might grant them wisdom and grace and strength and clarity, the ability to speak and the ability to hear, a compassionate heart towards the needs of all of our citizens. And Lord, we want to pray for our community and our country, struggling with unprecedented challenges, and we pray that God might bless America. For I pray this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Pratt. Councilwoman Amy Caramba, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba, here. Councilman Purdon.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Corey.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Present.
Councilman Forbes.
Present.
Okay, well, good morning, everybody. We are going to start on public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, Doug Pratt again from First Presbyterian Church, I just want to inform you all as a community service, that a new fund has been created in the private sector by our church. A significant amount of funds are available to assist people who are needing help to maintain their homes. I know the Lee Cares Fund, significant amount of money has been developed in our county, but independent of that, this private sector grant, over $150,000 has been raised and it is administered through Love Inc. Any of you may share with your constituents or any social service agencies you know that they can contact Love Inc. Up to $1,000 can be given to individuals to pay for mortgage, for rent, and for utilities to help them during a time of unemployment or of other challenges. So just want you to know about that. Feel free to contact the Love Inc. office if you have any questions or if you can refer any people to it.
Who's the director of Love Inc. now? Anyone know?
Ann Grandell. Ann Grandell, G-R-A-N-D-E-L-L. Their office is in the Sunshine Plaza building right across the street from the City Hall and they're available by phone. They do vetting. She has staff and a number of volunteers. Ann Grandell.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I see you're on the agenda, you're going to have an outside auditor, find out that it's not broken, but the state wants to make sure it's not broken. The state is mandating that we have an outside auditor, it's not because there's a problem there. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Council, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye. Mayor? I'd just like to make a comment, okay? I just want to comment on "aye," where we're having our special event permit for the fireworks show and as you may remember, I voted no to have this fireworks, but I want to commend the staff on organizing in a way where I feel comfortable having this and that we protect our residents from mass gatherings. So the staff has done a terrific job and I want to thank everybody who cooperated, including the property owner, so that we could look forward to that and I do agree that we need something to look forward to and find joy in.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Anybody else? Nope? Okay. All right, why don't we move on now to proclamations and presentations? Item A is an addendum with an updated green sheet and attachments. Update on the FYI 2020 expected general fund revenues by the city's director and presentation on the current financing market conditions by the city's financial advisor and this is green sheet number 20-06148. Good morning.
Good morning, Ann Wright, Finance Director. I would like to start off with just briefly highlighting the green sheet that shows expected numbers for FY 2020. These projections are based on some information that we did receive from the Department of Revenue on how they're handling remaining payments to the city. And at this time, it's very preliminary and I believe to be conservative, hoping that it is conservative position, but the state is really looking at how they need to make sure that their revenues are distributed through June 30 because they're on the June 30 fiscal year. I did ask if they were planning to continue the 50% reduction in our payments for July through September and they weren't able to give me an answer on that yet. They indicated they did not actually have the projections from the economists yet as to what they are projecting the impact to be out that far. I did have an opportunity to speak to one of the state economists and he gave me the same answer, although the state is scheduled to release some estimates in July, so we'll know more in July. So at this point, this is again very preliminary, but it does show a shortfall from our current year's budget of $2 million if this very conservative position that I'm showing here does actually occur. In light of that, I wanted to kind of talk about how we address that. There's basically three ways that we could address it. We could use unassigned fund balance to cover that shortfall, but once again, once you use the unassigned fund balance, it's not there to use going forward. We could look at our capital projects budgets. We have a lot of dollars budgeted in our CIP for the current year and a lot that carried over into this year, but we're not ready to actually incur those expenditures. So we could look at looking at our budgets for the CIP and pushing them out to better align with the year when they will be needed, when those funds will be needed.
Ann, if we were to, I don't want to interrupt, but from exactly what you just said, if we're to do that and we move CIPS money temporarily because we're not shovel-ready in a certain project, can we get the dollars reallocated back there, assuming we don't have the downfall or they get right back on track and then it's covered?
At any time the council would want to do that, yes, that could be done, but what I was thinking is that as we do the CIP for the FY 2021 budget, that it would be built in into that budget and that 10-year plan. And then also, another option again, is financing, providing the cash flow from a debt issuance that would then allow us to repay that over time. And with that, I'd like to transition and introduce to you Julie Santa Maria, who is the city's financial advisor and she is a director with RBC Capital Markets and she's going to update us on the financing market.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, good morning.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. It's happy to be here, very happy to be here. So the financial markets have experienced tremendous volatility. And if someone is going to move forward with this? Great. Okay. Thank you. Let me make sure that I know how to do this first. So COVID has caused tremendous volatility in the financial markets and I'm going to start with a brief overview of what has transpired since February. The top left chart shows the equity market performance during that time in the blue line and the red line shows the tremendous increase in the number of COVID cases, so you can see a strong correlation there. Unemployment has clearly dramatically increased, up to over 29 people unemployed, the largest since the Great Depression. The bottom left chart shows the market, it's a volatility index and you see how it spiked in the heat of the COVID quarantine and has now started to recover as the forward-looking view of the market sees less volatility. And on the bottom right, we clearly entered into a recession formerly in February and the forward-looking anticipation is somewhat more positive. This chart shows the interest rate, tax-exempt interest rate movements. This is called the Municipal Market Data Index and it is the index off of which all municipal bonds are priced. Positively even comparing the volatility that you see, that large spike during the heat of the COVID, we have seen tax-exempt interest rates go down nearly 1% for the five-year, nearly 8%, 0.8% for the 10-year, and 0.75% for the 30-year index. Looking at it from a broader historical context, interest rates are still very close to historic lows since 1981. That is the bottom blue line which shows those historical lows and the top darker blue line is where we are currently. So from a broader long-term perspective, the market is still very favorable for additional And what we've seen, the main driver of the market which has been improving over the last few weeks are fund flows. There are tremendous amount of tax-exempt municipal bond investments in bond funds and you see in February, March, April, there was a steep decline as investors pulled funds out of the fund flows with wanting to have cash on hand and you see over the past month in June, those fund flows have been improving and are now positive. So the city currently has two outstanding debt issues. One is a capital improvement note that was issued in 2014 at a rate of 2.96% and that is for downtown redevelopment projects. The second is a 2011 note at a rate of 2.21% and that was a refinancing of an original loan from the Florida Municipal Loan Council, League of Cities program, and that originally funded roads and the purchase of City Hall land. So the total is, as you can see on the far right, for the first next two or three years, the total debt service is approximately 3.6 million and then once that 2011 note falls off, then the annual debt service is approximately 1 million. And it's important to note that the 2014 has a make-whole penalty which essentially makes it not economical to refinance when interest rates are low and that was put in place because at the time that gave us the lowest possible interest cost, but the 2011 note is callable at any time without penalty, so that provides an opportunity to do some restructuring if the city would like to consider that.
When you say restructuring with that, what are you thinking that they would be willing to do? Do you have any idea ballpark numbers wise what we're talking or?
Yes. Going to the next slide. So the note was originally a 20-year loan and it could be restructured and extended 10 years to provide cash flow flexibility. It would then be a 30-year loan from its inception in 2001, which should be suitable pending bond council approval for the original projects which were for land and for roads. We assumed an interest rate of 2% and extending it out 10 years would provide approximately 2 million in additional cash flow in 2021 and another almost 2 million in 2022, but then you see over time, in the future value, the cost is about $460,000, but when you present value that back into today's dollars, it's approximately break even. So that's one alternative if you would like to wait on issuing debt for new money but need a little more cash flow in the next couple of years, this could provide a viable alternative. And it wouldn't need to be extended out the full 10 years, it could be shorter which would could actually result in some savings. And I was very conservative in this 2% rate, it could be closer to 1.75 or 1.5% currently.
So we cover the shortfall in its totality essentially and we don't really have any loss over the 30-year period?
There's additional costs in years 2023 through 2029, but when you look at that from in today's dollars, it's a cost of about $19,000, which to me is break even. And that could be shorter, which would reduce the cost, that additional interest cost.
I'd love to hear what Councilwoman Caramba and Councilmember Corey think on it because I know your backgrounds, but I mean that seems like a pretty, for a layman in the financial realm, seems like a pretty good option, but I'd love to hear what you two say.
Well, this is the first time I look at it, but I do think that this, in order to really assess this from a strategic point of view, you have to include what the 2014, do we have the 2014 in here? Oh, we do have it, okay.
Yes.
Because if we just let it run off, then we won't be paying anything towards it from '23 to '29, right? So we lose the cash flow in the '23 through '29 by doing this.
You would have a greater debt service cost.
Because we have 2.5 million till 2022, but nothing beyond that. I have to look at this again, but again, I do think that, I mean, if we're going to talk about this from a policy point of view, there's a lot of things to talk about besides whether there's a financial positive or negative there and I just think it's just premature to start discussing that. I think we should absorb that, but yeah.
The reason I brought this up at a previous meeting was not so much in terms of refinancing the debt, even the issue of 2011, but it was to generate a discussion over new money. And with interest rates at a historic, well, not a historic low, but recent low for the last 40 years, it seemed to me to make some sense to take a look at our CIP and see if we could advance some of those projects with some what I consider to be very cheap money. And that's the kind, that's the discussion I wanted to get into.
Yeah, and I'd like to add that we are sitting on a lot of money potentially from FEMA grants and every one of them except maybe one requires significant matching money. If we don't have that matching money, we're going to lose a lot more than we're going to borrow. So I think we really need to look at the option of new money because if we don't do something, and I'm certainly not in favor of raising the tax rate, certainly in this year especially with everything that's going on in the economy, we have to look for new money. Otherwise, we can jeopardize some pretty good size grants because most, all of them require matching money. That would be a horrific thing to do to residents because that money is all directed primarily to water quality, possibly little flooding mitigation, things like that.
I think this is a good discussion and there's been good points that have been raised, but I think what we, I thought we were going to be presented with at our budget hearing was a reflection on all these commitments that we may or may not have over some kind of schedule and there are some other commitments that we have sort of are interested in having to do with water quality. So we just need a total overview of all these kinds of things and then from a policy point of view, we have to decide whether, you know, it's, I think it's clear that we're going to have to borrow for a lot of these projects that we have and I'm not, and I'd like to have some feedback from Matt in regard to whether these projects are pushed out because of financial reasons or because of progressing the project reasons. I think they probably are more the second part of it than the first part of it, but if it's a financial, financial problem, then I would hope that our budget hearing, that we have a total overview of what's happening. And I think it's premature to look at anything in isolation, including a refinancing at this point. And, you know, we're, the financial responsibility that's on our shoulders is going to be a heavy one, so we need to do this in a kind of deliberate way, but I'm glad we're talking about it.
I think we should listen to the rest of the presentation before we continue because it's going to get into the new money and what everybody's talking about, so.
So the next slide, we wanted to show, because there are only two years left on that 2011 note and it'll be paid off fairly quickly, we wanted to show what new money scenarios might look like first if you left that in place and did not refinance it. And we looked at 10 million, 18 million, and 25 million as different examples. And so starting with the 10 million, you see the new money would only add about $200,000 to your payments over the next two years and then we start the principal payment on the new money after the 2011 is paid off. So that does save some interest costs, but I, we all know that things might be tight over the next two years. So if you could swing that, that would be the lowest overall cost. On the 18 million new money in '21 and '22, you'd see that would add $360,000 in interest over the next two years, but then those payments go down, including the existing 2014 to about 1.7 or 1.67 million. And then with the 25 million scenario, the interest would be about 500,000 for the next two years and then the annual payments would be approximately 2.1 million going forward. Does anyone have any questions on this slide?
I agree with Amy, we need to really have a really good overview on all this, but I think this information is very good.
Yeah, but this is only one side of it.
Right.
Yeah, that's why you can't really talk about it from a strategic point of view. I think we need to look at it in light of what our interests are and I agree with that we're going to need a lot more money than we probably have now, so.
The totality, let's look at the totality.
Yeah, exactly. And the scheduling of that and we're going to need to prioritize that. I mean, that's what we're really going to need to do, but we need to do that in the budget hearing, I think. But this is good information and we can use it as an input to it.
And we should have information from July, right?
Jesse and then Fred.
Sorry.
Come July, when we're getting into budget hearings, we're going to have a clearer answer on what the actual shortfall looks like anyway, so we might be in a better position to actually decide which one of these might be the best option anyway.
And there is another option, she's going to get to the next page.
Right, yes.
Thanks Mike for keeping us on track, but Fred, you had a comment?
Yeah, in that overview that we get, the complete picture, so I think it's important that we put in there what would happen to the city if we had another Irma situation and we needed to come up with all the money to fund the cleanup and you're going to be lucky to get it back in two or three years, which is what we, that was exceedingly on the good side of normal.
Slide eight shows an alternative where the new money is combined with an extension. Can you go back? Not sure why that moved forward. Here we go. Thank you. This is a combined extension with the new money and so starting with the $10 million scenario, you can see that in 2021 and '22 and pretty much beyond, that smoothes out the impact of the new money. There is an additional interest cost by extending the 2011, but it really would help in this cash flow if necessary. The same thing for the 18 million new money, using an extension of the 2021, your debt service over the next few years is approximately $2 million and then it drops off after the 2011 and 2014 issues mature. 25 million new money combined with the extension, the debt service is about 2.5 million and then decreases to about 2.3 million when those issues mature. So there's a little bit of additional cost associated with the extension, but these two, the previous page that we discussed and this page are more of the extremes and we could come up with something that compromises and provides less interest cost from extending the 2011 issue, once we have a better idea of the type, the amount that you all are
What would be the nature of these borrowings? I mean, would you do it from the Florida League of Cities or from private banking or what do you think, what do you anticipate?
Bank loans, direct bank loans issued by the city would be the lowest cost. The Florida League of Cities has a really good program, but they have administrative costs and ongoing fees that you would not have in a bank loan. And even when you go through the Florida League of Cities program, you're still issuing the bonds yourself, there's no pool benefit for a bank loan like this because each issuance is separate.
It's underwrite. Okay, thank you.
There's no benefit, but it sounds like there are some benefits. Is that correct or no?
The benefit would be that they have certain, they have their existing documents which they utilize, documents in place, they have existing professionals that you could move forward with, but they, they still do an RFP for bank loan like the city would do if you did it yourself. They have additional costs that add compared to you doing it yourself, administrative and other fees.
So the Florida League of Cities would be a savings or not a savings?
It would not be a savings, it would cost more.
I just want to be clear on that because I've heard those conversations over the years.
Yes, it is a moneymaker for them.
And I've actually heard them the other way, so that's interesting.
Well, it helps support the Florida League of Cities cause, it is a moneymaker for them, so.
What would be an order of a ballpark way of estimating that cost if you went with the Florida League of Cities? It would be, would it add a quarter percent or 10%? I mean, what's the magnitude?
It could be approximately $20,000 to $30,000 more upfront. I would like to do that analysis and get back with you on that since I haven't done that.
That's what it was that I asked. I thought it was more than that.
So we were asked to discuss some potential new revenue streams and just to start, all of these streams would have some impact on property owners and residents because they would be increasing taxes or fees in some manner. So one possibility would be a general obligation bond referendum where the citizens, property owners vote to add debt millage on their property taxes. Recent general obligation referendums have seen more favor than those in the past, specifically if you identify projects that really have large community support, but that is a variable, it could pass or not pass, but a positive aspect is the voters decide if they want to tax themselves for these projects. want to tax themselves for these projects. Other additional taxes and fees that I know that the city has discussed in the past would be increasing the electric franchise fee. You could do an additional 1% increase, which would provide approximately $700,000 a year in additional revenue. And then the communication service tax, that could be increased as well. And a 1% increase would generate approximately $360,000 in additional revenue. And then there's the stormwater fee, that could also be increased for additional stormwater projects.
But, and, don't those dollars specifically have to go to storm-related projects? So, in regards to covering the shortfall, this doesn't help us if we were to raise that?
That's correct. If you're using additional dollars from your existing stormwater fee, additional general fund monies to cover that, then it would help. But to the extent that you're only using your stormwater assessment fee to make, to for stormwater operations and projects, then that's correct. Now, there is a bit of flexibility in terms of, once those swales and sidewalks are torn up, they can be replaced with stormwater, and there's some landscaping and street lighting, which may be able to be included in a stormwater assessment project.
So, to clarify, there's portions of a project, for example, enclosing drainage for a sidewalk, the portions that are stormwater-related can be utilized by the stormwater assessment fee. The actual transportation portion of the sidewalk, that would be covered under impact fees, transportation impact fees or general fund.
In other words, we can walk and chew gum at the same time when we do this.
Got it. You sure about that?
Okay.
We're going to try.
So, in conclusion, the extension of the new note and/or new borrowing benefits are, interest rates are close to historic lows. 20-year level debt service could be financed with a bank loan, which would save upfront costs, and banks have been very competitive recently on different RFPs that I've seen. And the new debt service after the extension, if you were to consider that manner, could be significantly lower compared to your costs in the next two years, when you might be facing some cash flow issues. The considerations are, of course, it would be an increase in the city's debt overall. And if the Series 2011 note was extended, obviously, if you pay it off in two years, it's gone, and you have no additional interest cost. If it's extended, you would be paying additional interest cost. On the revenue increases, the benefits would be a geo-obligation, geo-bond referendum enables residents to make that decision, with, they would like to add millage to their taxes and support those projects. And then there are other taxes or fees that could be increased to generate new revenues, so you do have some alternatives there. Considerations, as I mentioned from the outset, about the revenue increases is that they will impact taxpayers or residents, property owners in some manner, just perhaps in a different way. And that is the end of my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you're very thorough.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I know it's a lot of numbers, but we were asked to provide anywhere from 10 to 25 million, so if that gets narrowed down a little bit, then it would...
I would have one question in terms of what other cities in southwest Florida are doing with respect to looking at additional financing at this point. Are you seeing inquiries from?
Yes.
People in the three-county area?
Yes, absolutely. For example, the city of Cape Coral, who I work with, they've been, we've done two financings over the past five months for fire trucks and equipment and fire stations. I know that Lee County, I believe, has been issuing some debt. I know it's on the other side, but Miami Beach issued a, had a successful geo-referendum in 2018. I think 380 million in projects were approved by the voters, so that, those projects are underway.
And what's the timeframe? In other words, if you're trying to take, take advantage of the current market rates on interest, and we make a decision to borrow money?
It would be approximately two months.
Two months. And when, and could we lock up the interest rate once we make a commitment?
It depends on the proposals that are received. For example, with the city of Cape Coral, we recently did an RFP. We had JP Morgan Chase come in with an interest rate of 1.5% for a 10-year financing, but that was set two days prior to closing. There were some other, several other responses that were in the 2% range or higher, and because of that large differential, the city was willing to take that interest rate risk, because you would have had to have a very large movement for it to not be favorable.
Is there any interest in the bank markets in terms of interest-only product, loans with bullets, say a five-year bullet, 10-year bullet, 15-year bullet, something along that line?
If it's interest-only for 10 years, that's tough for them.
Right.
But for two years, like what I showed you, if you kept the 2011 outstanding, that should be fine.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, great job. Okay. We are going, do we, anybody need a recess? It's here in my notes. So I'm just following the script, or are we okay? All right? I guess we're going to move on now to mayor and councilmember items. Discussion regarding proposed city council retreat and workshop, and this is Councilwoman Amy Caramba, green sheet number 2006158. Amy?
Hi. I put this green sheet in following the conversation that Laura introduced at our last meeting in regard to having prescribed break sessions. And because of kind of the interaction among the council people over the last couple of meetings, where I think that there, from times, I've, I think, sensed some conflict. And I think it's, I think what's happened, well, one of the things that's happened is we have new people on, not that they're, it's their at fault, is that whenever you have new people on, in a committee kind of thing, or in a board, it's, it takes some time to work things out among the personalities. And I recall that when we got on in 2016, if we remember, soon after that, we had a retreat, and we went over kind of procedural kind of things, and some, and also some philosophical things. And those items that I have in my green sheet are just what I came into my mind. It doesn't have to be things that we have to discuss, but I thought it might be worth discussing it. But I wanted to introduce to the council, if others had the same feeling that I did, and if they were willing to have a retreat, we don't talk about anything we have to vote on, but just procedures of how we want to hold our meetings and how we introduce items, what we think about things like government life, because this discussion about financing is relevant to that. And anything else anybody wants to talk about. So if you're willing, I think we could have the staff set it up. If you're not, then we'll just have to go on the way we are. I guess that's what it is.
Sure. No, Amy, thanks for bringing this forward. Are there other comments or thoughts? I'm absolutely in support of it, Amy. Jesse?
As one of the new members, I'm just curious, do we get to do a trust fall?
A what?
Trust fall?
Oh, no, yeah, no.
No. No, in all seriousness, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm always open to it. I mean, I think that we have pretty good rapport up here for the most part. You know, every now and then, we get a little riled up, but I'm, I'm open to, you know, getting together and discussing it, for sure.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Laura?
I would, I think it would be great, and it's difficult because of the logistics and sunshine law. So I don't know how you kind of do that. It almost like, could we suspend sunshine law and then, but record it, so that we're not, you know, can we have our cake and eat it too? And I don't know. So, I think it, it would be great to just have a session where we could talk and staff could share, and staff could, they too are sort of new with all the people, and establish boundaries that are healthy and efficient, and I think it's a great idea.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Chris?
Yeah, I would support the idea. I think the last meeting especially, where it ended up taking almost five hours. That could have been done a little more efficiently, I think. I think we just need to figure out what the rules of the road are, so that we can conduct these meetings efficiently, get our job, get our work done, and remain friends after the meeting. So, I would be all in favor of it.
Great, thank you, Chris. Mike?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I would just ask that it be on a Monday, so I don't have to lose another day of work.
Absolutely. Fred?
Yeah, I'm in favor. I'm assuming that Derek will be there to with us.
And, and I'm, and I'm all in favor of it, and you've heard me say it before, but we always, I do continue to hear, and as the chairman of this meeting, about the length of the meetings. As somebody that runs the meeting, I don't really dissect the dissection, so we can keep talking about the lengths of the meetings, or, and we can continue to dissect the dissection, or we can look at quicker meetings. So I think we need to discuss that as well.
Sure.
So I'm all in favor of it.
I love quicker meetings.
Yes. Okay, great, so I think you have seven yeses. We'd love to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, discussion of health data regarding COVID-19, an update to the public. Councilwoman Amy Caramba, green sheet number 20-06165.
Okay, I, I don't know about you, but I've been having trouble monitoring all the written commentary that comes from various institutions that we rely on, as we work through this COVID-19 problem. And I had asked staff to help me to extract from the many things that we receive, diagrams that reflected the guidelines that were put forth by the White House and adopted by Governor DeSantis, because I wanted to quickly monitor on a daily basis what was happening within our community. So these things are meant to do that. I found it useful, and I wanted to share it, and I didn't know if we wanted to do anything more with it. But I think when we have some of our discussions about how we're going to go forward reopening our city, I thought that it was pretty useful to me, and I, and that's basically what I did. So I get this report from Brenda, who did a tremendous job, I just have to compliment her on sticking with it and many turnarounds, to focus on things which I think should be focused on if we're following the guidelines, both from the White House and the state of Florida, Governor DeSantis. And they include, you know, it's focused on Lee County data, it probably should also include Collier also, but mostly this is Lee County. And, and it does both the deaths, the number of cases, the symptomatic measures, and then the testing and the percent positives, and then, and in the, on the very bottom is all, is probably the most important thing as we open, is just the health utilization data that, again, is updated, I think, on a daily basis. So for me, it has it all on one page, and I don't have to do so much work, so I appreciate the staff helping me do that. And whatever you want to, if you want to use it, fine, if you don't, fine also, but that's why I introduced it here.
Thank you, Amy. It's awesome.
Council, Jesse?
I just think it's really good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think it was very helpful, seeing it presented this way, and, you know, what really stands out is the, the weekly count of the flu versus COVID, where the flu is nearly double, you know, the COVID cases each week.
Right.
So, it, it's a much better way to look at it, and, yeah, if you receive this, I'd like to receive it also. Or we can put it on the website, and I think a lot of people would like to be able to see it.
We can forward it each day to councilmembers and then update it on the website.
Thank you. And, and I could just, and I think we could just add the commentary that I made, the reason why we chose these, you know, there's like symptomatic deaths and new cases, and, and then the, the testing information, the hospital utilization. I mean, that's why these things are here. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Amy. All right, we're going to move on to item C. Oh, sorry, Fred?
Well, one, one more comment on what we're going through, and that is, even though we have a big spike or had a spike in new cases, if you look at the new hospitalization and divide that by new cases, your percentage is that if you have, let's say, 100,000, 10,000 more cases drop in on you, you're, you're looking at percentages depending on whether you're in Collier, Lee, or the state, of maybe 7% or 7.5 on a high, down to something in the 5.5%. So just because you have a new case, it doesn't mean that all those cases went to the hospital. A very small percentage, which is the big reason we had the shutdown. Everybody was worried about overloading the hospitals with cases, and that's not the case, at least so far.
Okay, anybody else? Chris? Yeah?
I think Fred raises a good point. The key, key indicators to me are hospital admissions. If you track hospital admissions, then I think you have a pretty good idea of what's going on in terms of the significance of the spike in COVID cases in the state. Simply tracking hospital admissions, I think, is the way I look at it.
Right, that's important.
And we have been, we're down to two calls a week now. It was, when we started off in March, daily phone calls with the mayors of Lee County, Senator Lizbeth Benacristo, and Chairman Brian Hammond on the Lee County Commission. That's, right, you, you see the numbers, but then when somebody is, that tests positive, but then when they test negative, they're not dropped off the numbers. So the numbers just keep compounding, 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 and nobody is showing or seems to be able to report the good news, they just want to focus on the bad news and drive the numbers up. So I think it's going to be very helpful. So thank you, Amy. Anybody else? Okay. Item C, discussion on acceptance of grant funds from the National Association of Realtors, NAR, regarding the van shell cleanup, and this is Councilman Jesse Purdon, green sheet number 20-06161. Jesse?
Okay, so this one, as you know, our van shell was vandalized. I went down there immediately, and one of the first calls that I got was from the CEO of the Realtors, Megan, and she said, Jesse, I think that there's a potential for us to help you with some of the costs via a grant for community, you know, for making the community nicer. So I said, look, if you can go through the process and get us the money, I would definitely be open to that. So she was able to do that, navigated the process with Arlena and myself, and now she has $3,000 that she would like to give back to the city, and we can use those funds to, you know, we'll give her receipts, obviously, from chemicals and things that we use throughout the process, and then we'll just straight up get those funds back to the city. And she, you know, bear continues to, can do things for the city of Bonita. So this is just another example, and it's a way for us to get free money back to the city. So I'm hopeful this goes.
Okay.
This goes through. Thank you.
Well, no, I guess I'll, I'll jump in here, because certainly, I, I was down there, I think probably all of us were at, at various times, but when I was there.
You were there.
And had been there, Councilman Purdon, and on your own initiative, started a reward program, and did, did a lot of outreach, and did some wonderful things that I might even say are, are above and beyond, but there is no such thing when you're passionate about your city, and passionate about one of our true identities of our city, our, our beloved Riverwalk Park. So I compliment you on this, I compliment your efforts. It's, it's, it was a horrible blow for our city, getting back to First Amendment rights, and my statement about First Amendment rights, and our spirited discussion up here on First Amendment rights. But when it crosses the line and becomes destruction of property, it then becomes criminal. And I know you have reached out to the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and I, I just want to compliment you, and I am fully in support of this.
Thank you.
Other members?
Great job, Jesse. Terrific, good job.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do.
I'll make the motion to accept. I'll make the motion to accept it. Laura will and I'll, and I'll second it. Councilwoman Carr-
Vice versa.
And I'll do a second, but seriously.
And just to clarify, it's an amount of 3,000, depending on the amount of receipts and what are allowable costs will be the amount, the full amount of the grant back. So, it might be under that. Additionally, we do need to make sure that it is consistent with our rules and procedures when we apply for, for the funds. But it is, it would be, end up being a budget transfer to the city.
Okay. Okay, further discussion, council? Roll call please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
My first unanimous one. Woo!
All right, wow. Now, careful Jesse, you're adding to the length of the meetings. I just want to warn you. All right, we're going to continue from May 20th and June 3rd, appoint the mayor and members of city council to various boards and committees. And this is green sheet number 20-06153. And I am here to help and give everybody else at this table first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth choice of their committee assignments for, for obvious reasons. So, where do we want to begin? Or how do we want to go through this, Arlene? Do you want to tee this up maybe or?
Well, on the first page you'll see, we did provide, we did receive several of the council members of their interests. So, if, if you like, what we've done before is we've just taken each of them, line item by line, and discussed the current seated council member and then discussed, and if there was a vacancy and discussed and have to come forward to determine the final outcome.
Are we going to just have to redo this again? Is it?
In November.
I mean, is it productive to do this since a lot of these meetings aren't happening and we can cover them sort of as a council instead of doing the time and effort to? And then, in what, November, we, we do them or?
It's the pleasure of the council. So, if you'd like to do them now, you're more than welcome to. If you wish to wait till after the November election, it's worth as well.
Council, what's your pleasure?
Well, November is a long time. I think we should have official liaisons to, in fact, I just had an Art in Public Places video conference just this week. So, that's operating. I don't know.
I want to commend you. Great job. We almost need more cottages. We have wonderful applicants.
That's what I said, but I don't think we're going to get them. No, we need another art center. But anyway, but the point is, is that I do think that we should at least be, I think it'd be better if we signed it and I, I don't know how long it's going to take anyway.
Okay, fine, or whatever the pleasure you guys want to do. What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think I agree, November's a long way off. Whether these meetings are virtual, I was on a very productive diversity outreach committee meeting, Monday night it was, and everybody's full steam ahead. Yeah, we were on the computer, but we're full steam ahead and kind of treading water or whatever the term might be until November. I, I don't believe that serves the city well. Chris?
What are your thoughts? I think we need to go ahead with it. You know, I would like to, as a new council member, at least get involved with some of these if it has to, if it changes assignments in November, that's fine. But I think these boards and councils and the people that serve on them want to see that we're interested in what they do. So, I, I see no harm in going ahead with it right now.
Great.
Yeah, let's just do it.
Mike? Fred? Okay. And I, look, and we can go about this any way that anybody would like. But I, why don't we start with Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson? What are your interest in committees, Deputy Mayor?
Well, I'm, I'm happy with all the ones I'm on, but, but I know Chris would like the technology. So, I'm, I'm willing to.
I have a set actually. Why don't we start with city committees and like go through that and then check it off, like the boxes? Because-
Yeah, you know what? I like that. We'll go line by line, have a discussion.
And decide.
Yeah, no, I like that Laura. That's actually great. Okay, how about Art in Public Places? Sorry, Mike, we'll hold those thoughts, but thank you.
Yeah, I would like to continue if, if that's, you know, I don't know if anyone else is interested, but it's, it's one of the fun things, one of the few fun things that I do. So-
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Is everybody okay? Any objection to Amy continuing on Art in Public Places?
Doing a great job.
Great job Amy. Thank you very much. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Committee?
I'd like to keep that one for obvious reasons.
Also doing a great job.
Sounds good. That makes sense.
Okay, Historic Preservation Board?
I would like to keep that also.
Okay, any objections, anybody? Great job Laura. Thank you. The Outreach Advisory Committee, and I, and I had talked with Arlene about this, and this isn't probably the time or the place, but I'd like to check in and I'd like to see if there, is there any objection to this committee being called the Diversity Outreach Advisory Committee? Is there any objection to that?
I think we went over that when we started the committee and I do have an objection.
Okay, are there any, thank you Amy. Are there any other objections? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move forward to changing the name of that formally to the Diversity Outreach Committee.
But what do you mean? Well, because I think we, we did not have that because we were not interested in some of the wording of what we meant by diversity. And we think that it was more inclusive to have an outreach committee to anyone who needs it within the city. All right? And you can't just change the name. You have to change the concept. All right? And we had a long discussion about this.
And I was in objection to it and I was in a minority and now with all due respect, you're in the minority.
But, but no, you are asking to change a committee without-
The name of it.
Without articulating anything else. All right? So, I mean, it's, it's not a full-
Do you want to watch the meeting that we had of the Diversity Outreach Committee on Monday?
I would be-
Have you seen the national headlines for the past month? Words matter and it does matter to this committee.
But I think Amy has a valid point.
We need to have a discussion about what the purpose of the committee is and I am totally on board with some of the things. I'm the one that made a statement at the last one. So, don't start that, really. I mean, go down that path with me. I am well aware about what's happening. But what I am concerned about is that we do not make changes in a, in a, in an atmosphere when we're very emotional about and very sad about it. And I'll be glad to look at it. And if you have a proposal other than the change of the name, that's just window dressing. I mean, if that's all you're changing, what's the point?
Well, that's your opinion. Jesse?
I just wanted to clarify and not even to the name, but to the mission of, of this committee, which I was the first chairman of and I chaired it for the first two years it was here, was it was to give people who traditionally did not have a voice at the table, at the seat of city government, a voice at the table. So, when folks like, you know, over at the soccer fields after Irma and the, and the fences were down for two months and nobody on council knew that, they came to the Outreach Committee. I came to council and I said, hey, there's approximately 1,100 families that are affected by this and I know y'all didn't understand, but if this were in Benita Bay, it would have been fixed two months ago. And you guys had the trucks there the next day fixing it. So, the purpose of this committee was to give people, again, who did not know how to get to the city council, to the mayor or understand that they had a seat at the table to give them a seat at the table. So, name aside, mission is the same. That's what we have done. That's what we will continue to do. So, I just wanted to give clarity on the mission for anybody who had any misunderstanding of what that committee actually does.
Well, I mean, we're all in favor of it. That's why we have it. All right?
Okay, so why dig in so hard on the name of the committee, Amy?
Because I didn't approve of it the last time and because I, I thought it had some unintended consequences.
Is there anybody else at this table that objects? Okay, so you object Laura, please?
I do believe that it becomes divisive and we start to get into identity politics. It's clear, it's outrageous for anyone who doesn't feel they have a voice. So, why do we need to become divisive and by adding words that then can have different meanings to different people and get, you know, different sides? We want to be united. So, why be divisive? So, I, I support just leaving it.
Outreach Committee.
Thank you. Any objection down at this end of the table?
Yeah, I'll object. I think Laura and Amy bring up the points. And if we want a diversity committee, we'll form a diversity committee. But I don't think we want to try to put something on the tail of the horse that really doesn't belong there.
Any other in opposition?
Well, not, not really opposition. Outreach is to get other diverse opinions. So, I, I don't see a problem with calling it Diversity Outreach Committee.
Thanks Mike. Fred?
Yeah, I, I think that I kind of agree with Chris and Amy on this, that we should at least study it more and find out what we're going to be changing and all that. I think it's, I don't see any harm. I was in favor of setting up the committee originally and it's done a good job. So, that's my thought.
Thank you Fred.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes Jesse?
With all due respect, I just wanted to give y'all the definition of diversity. It means understanding that each individual is unique and recognizing our individual differences. These can be along the dimensions of race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, age, physical abilities, religious beliefs, political beliefs, or ideologies. So, I take exception to the idea that diversity is creating division, quite the opposite of what diversity is about. And it isn't about race. You guys are singularly making it about race. Diversity covers-
I don't think anyone mentioned race.
Let's not interrupt each other, please. Thank you. Another, then you'll be in there.
And then to say that we need to study what the word means more. What do we need to do a study on what diversity means? Who doesn't understand? If you don't understand, I can read it again. So, I'm, I'm just curious really what the problem is. I, it wasn't my idea. I wasn't, I, I didn't even jump on for it, but the argument against it, I have to go with the mayor on it. It's, it's a nonsensical argument that we don't understand what diversity means. I just gave you the definition. So, I'm, I'm confused at the confusion.
Well, even your, your definition gives identity groups. That's a separation.
But it covers all of them.
Well, it doesn't matter. Instead of looking at people as residents of Benita, we're looking at them as groups. So, that's my objection.
That's the purpose.
No, it isn't. The purpose is to include all Benetans in the operations of government. That's what the purpose of the Outreach Committee is.
That's not the purpose of the Outreach Committee. The purpose of the Outreach Committee is to give a voice to people who have traditionally not had a voice at the table, a seat at the table in city government via a committee. And that could be, that could be financial, that could be racial, that could be sexual, that could be any way you want to look at what you want to call diversity. And it doesn't single anybody out for that. It's quite the opposite. Isn't creating a situation where we should be angry at saying, hey, guess what? Everybody can be on this committee. And I don't see why there's any opposition to that.
Well, I disagree.
Thank you. Laura, you had something and then I think Chris.
Well, A, it would have been nice that it was introduced and it wasn't a fait accompli almost. In that there was no reason presented prior to this that we needed to change names of the committee. This agenda item has been circled for, what, the last four meetings? So, why didn't we have that thrown out there so we could have thought about it? And Jesse, I don't need you to read diversity again. Thank you. And it does have the identity separation. Instead of viewing everyone as Benetians, Americans, I don't know, I would say God-loving-
Floridians.
I mean, you know, where are we going with you then pointing all these people out?
It's, well, that's what diversity is. That's what I'm trying to say. It's a subsection of everybody. That's the whole point of diversity.
Thank you Chris.
I just asked to call the question.
Okay, very good.
So, just to clarify, what we discussed is the, the committee was created by resolution. So, it would require, you would be directing staff to bring back a resolution to the next meeting for you to consider the name change. It'd have to be done by resolution.
I don't see the support up here, so I don't think we'll need to do that. So, who would like to be the chairman of this committee?
I'll take Outreach, obviously.
Okay.
I mean, that's a-
Jesse? Very good. So, what I'm going to do here where it says Dewitt?
Liaison. Liaison.
Excuse me Fred?
I was simply asking, you said Chairman and I think you meant Liaison.
Okay, thanks Fred. Appreciate that. So, Jesse, congratulations.
And we don't need to bring it back up.
What's that?
I see no interest in bringing it back up. Clearly, we don't have the support.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you very much. And that has been by far the most rewarding committee I've been involved on, I guess, directly with these committees here. You know my passion for water and blue green algae and the environment and other things, but without a doubt, the creation of this committee has been phenomenal. So, Jesse, I, I wish you well. I know you'll do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Special Events Committee, and that was formerly Councilman Greg Dewitt.
No interest, thank you.
I'll do it if, if no objections. I get to work with Laura, right?
Any, is that fine with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Congratulations Laura.
Thank you.
The Streetlight Committee, and that was formerly Councilman Dewitt.
Also no interest, thank you.
The Streetlight Committee, do we have any takers? Okay, I'll offer my name. How's that?
Does it meet?
Okay, Technology Advisory Board, and that is currently Deputy Mayor Gibson.
Yeah, I've enjoyed serving on it, but like I said, I, I'll give the opportunity to Chris because I know he expressed interest in it.
Okay. So, we have a trade. Gibson to Corey.
Very good.
Thank you gentlemen. Tree Advisory Board, and this is currently Fred Forbes.
I have no objection if somebody else wants to be on there, the liaison.
The Tree Advisory Board? Anybody else interested? Fred, would you not be willing to continue?
No, I'm, I'm happy to continue. There's, there's only a couple on there that I really need to stay on, but that's not one of them.
Well, Fred, congratulations. You've been re-elected to the Tree Advisory Board. Veterans Advisory Committee, and this is currently Amy Caramba. Amy?
I'd like to continue, but Councilwoman Carr had expressed interest.
No, no, you're doing a great job.
So, if she wants to do that, she can do that. But-
No, you're doing a great job.
I don't mind if I, I mean, I'll switch her if she wants to.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. External Committees. Agency on Bay Management, Fred Forbes.
Yeah, that really, basically that's in a sad state of affairs and it probably will cease to exist. They may end up going over to Florida Gulf Coast University or I've heard all kind of possibilities. And it's all tied also to the Regional Planning Authority up there that they have. So, I, somebody would like to do it, that's fine.
I'll do it.
Council? Laura?
Sure.
Okay. Got another trade. Forbes to Carr, outstanding.
I, I'd make a comment. If Laura's going to do that one, she might want to also, we may want to ask her to do the Planning Authority that Dewitt was on that and I was kind of an alternate. That's the one that Margaret Whitesoul is the executive director on.
Okay, thank you Fred. The Bay and River, Stereobay Agency on Bay Management. And that is currently Fred Forbes.
Yeah, that's, I'm talking the same thing. It's, they're all kind of lumped together. So-
Is that good Laura? Okay.
I just have to check the dates.
Okay. The Blue Zone, and that is Laura Carr.
No, well, that's me actually.
It's Amy.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I'm sorry. That was formerly Peter O'Flynn.
And I did, I did go to one meeting and then we had all the shutdown and I don't, it just is, is, the job is to advance the Blue Zone thinking of wellness is what it is. And I can continue it or somebody else can do it, either way.
Council, what's your pleasure on the Blue Zone?
Amy's doing a great job.
Amy, congratulations. The Board of County Commissioners, and I'm certainly- The Board of County Commissioners, and I'm certainly, have enjoyed that committee, if you will, being up there quite a bit. What is your interest?
Mr. Mayor, I personally, I would like, being that you're the mayor, I'd love to see you on the county commission, at least until you're done. That's my thought.
And I'd like to just go in and see what they're like. I won't, you know, interfere or talk to you if we're not allowed, whatever the rules are.
Well, Laura, would you like to be, or, I mean, I'm happy to continue. Make no mistake.
Mayor, you attend their meetings? Is that what you're doing?
I do go, I mean, not every meeting.
Yeah.
Certainly not every meeting, but I'm up there quite a bit.
No, I think, I think you should do that if you want, unless-
Well, do you, I mean, is it important that I go and sit at the meetings? Or is it important that I have probably at least weekly interaction with probably four of the five?
Well, I think some kind of interaction with them is good. I don't think you have to go to the meetings, but I would like to get some reporting back to the council on your, either your telephone calls, or so that we know what's going at the, I mean, I think you should be the point personally because you're the mayor. Not that no one else could go there, and, I mean, they're all on video. We don't even have to go there. We could just watch them and still monitor it.
Okay.
Because there's very little opportunity to interact at the meetings, to talk, you know, two minutes or something, and-
Right, no, exactly.
So you're better off doing it your way, but I would like to get, and that's basically my comment about a lot of these things, that I think we need to have more feedback from our liaisons.
Okay, and obviously, if anybody here has specific questions, obviously, they can talk to the county commissioners, but if there's any particular items you want me to bring to them, I'm happy to do that, either way, whatever the committee's pleasure is. Okay, Benita Estero Economic Development Council, Fred Forbes.
I.
I can't hear what he said.
I'm sorry, Fred. It's hard to hear you.
I said if someone else would like to do that, that's fine.
Jesse would like to do it.
May I have some-
Yes, Amy.
I have something to say about that because I'm on the Horizon Council, which I would like to continue. And when I first did the liaison there, the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Council did not have a big presence there, but now they are sort of there. And I really think that those things are all coordinated. So I kind of would like to go do that so that I can coordinate the effort on the Horizon. Not because I want to take a corner on that, but they really are related. And I think we need to influence in both Lee County and in Benita, so that's my feeling.
And I would love to, you know, if there's a way we can both work on that. The reason I want to do Benita Estero Economic Development Council is because when we initially decided that we were going to start giving them money eight years ago, I advocated for that because I thought that it was going to be good. Now they're starting to make a lot of progress over there additionally. Throughout the last couple of months, I've sat with Tiffany Esposito, who's the chair of that, a number of times, and I've worked with her on a number of projects. She feels that we really have not been active as a city, but would love to have us there. And I believe her and I have some pretty good synergies, so, you know, I don't need anything to do with the Horizon, but from at least the economic, Benita Estero Economic Development Council portion, I'd like to be present. I mean, Amy can be the voter, but I would like to be there perhaps. I don't know how we would work that out. Well, that's one that I'd be interested in.
Well, I'm interested to hear what you're saying because I do think the council, this is one area where the council needs some talking, you know, because we do give them money. And I think that we need to have some input into that, and we have not really taken a, this is one of the reasons why I think it's somewhat related. So why don't we have a meeting, or I don't know if we can have a meeting with, we could have a meeting with Tiffany as long as we're not voting on anything, and just have a discussion of how we're going to work together.
Absolutely.
But the chamber was not at all involved with the Horizon Council, and it was, I had offered to the Horizon Council to have chambers be members, which they never were before. So the reason they're even involved now is because of the effort that we did through the city. And I think we should continue to do that. And I think that several council people in the past have questioned the financing that's gone in there. So I think, again, this is one of the areas where I think the council needs reporting back because it's an important part of how we do business, so we could work together on that.
Can't, yeah, can't we, the way it's done is you have to notice the meeting, and you're the voting member, Amy, and then Jesse is there, and he can make comments as you've noticed it.
And if you're unable to attend, Jesse is a voting member.
Yeah, I don't care who's a voting member. I think we need a discussion among the council and with them on all these areas.
And here's a question. So if we're going to do this because Horizon Council's tied in, do I also need to go to Horizon?
Well, I also want to go to Horizon.
Well, Horizon Council.
I love it.
Okay, so if I don't need, okay, so then I would like to be a voting member on the Benita Estero Economic Development Council. If I'm not going to be on Horizon, I would like to go with somebody to this and be a voting member on this if I'm not going to be on Horizon.
Well, the Horizon Council, we have a seat at the executive board, so I think you can go as an observer, you know, but you don't, you know, it's basically the public doesn't say anything when they're there, and very few, nobody goes, you know, at the board meetings. You can attend, and I encourage you to go to the general membership meetings, which I, we all get notice of. But we actually have a seat on the board there, which is, I think, very important.
You've heard the discussion. What do you recommend?
Well, to clarify, the meetings of the Benita Springs Economic Development, it's not, we're not a voting member. We attend and we are contributor to the board. So the reason you don't, you don't vote is because some of the information they have is public record. There's times when the council members exit the meeting as well. But we can talk with Tiffany about noticing the meetings to see how that might work within their ability to have two or more council members there. There's also regular activities of the EDC where they have open houses in the evening, where multiple council members have attended those as well.
I'm more interested in having the conversation with Tiffany, so I think that's what we need to work on. Jesse?
Good. Okay. Benita Springs Utilities, Fred Forbes.
Yeah, the, if somebody wants to do that, that's fine.
I'll do it.
I've worked with them and got them to go ahead and develop shovel-ready plans to convert roughly 125 to 150 septic tanks in the wettest area of the city called the DRGR, basically. And all that problematic output of those septic tanks in the wet season easily flows into our Imperial River. So that's, my interest in that is seeing that we push that with DEP and also up there at the end of this fiscal year, because they always have money left over from other shovel-ready projects not going forward. But if somebody else wants to do that, I've got a good rapport with John Chinkins, but it's fine.
Okay, great. Congratulations, Laura Carr. Chamber of Commerce, Fred Forbes.
Somebody else.
Laura Carr is going to be Benita Springs Utilities now. Thank you, Chris. Fred, Chamber of Commerce.
Same, same thing. I only really have two that I really need to do, so.
Jesse?
Yeah, I'd like that.
Congratulations. Okay, Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program, Fred Forbes.
There's a problem with that. Most of their meetings are the same day as a council meeting. And it's not only the same day as council meeting, but it is the morning meeting. And they have their meetings now, they didn't use to do it that way, but they have their meetings up in Punta Gorda. So whoever gets this got the same problem I had. There's no way you can get there, even if they have a big meeting. And recently, they had a Zoom meeting. It wasn't on the same day, which I could participate in, but.
Any thoughts there? Arlene, or?
It says quarterly. Have they changed, you know?
They have a whole lot of members, and we're just one, one person.
Arlene, any thoughts there?
As long as we have somebody to be a correspondent to it, to keep up with it.
I'll go up to Punta Gorda.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Okay, Coastal Advisory Committee, Beaches and Shores, and that was formerly Greg DeWitt.
I'm fine with it. If somebody would like it, that's fine, but if not, I'm good with keeping it. Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Chris? Thank you, Chris. Collier County Liaison, there again, that's myself. Certainly have gone down to fewer meetings of actual Collier County meetings, but in pretty regular communication there as well with members of the Collier County Commission. Continuing that role till, okay, I'll continue in that role. Thank you. Crew Land and Water Trust Executive Board, Amy Caramba.
I do not believe we are on the executive board. I go to their meetings and I'm just an observer. Arlene, do you? Are we supposed to be on the executive board?
No, I think previously there had been a member of council as an executive board member, but I believe our, is membership now.
Right, so I just go and observe the meetings, so, and I will continue to do that, or somebody else can do it. You know, they're doing a great job, and there's a lot of publicity in what they're doing. We get emails all the time, so I don't usually report on it.
Crew does a lot.
Yeah, they do a lot, but we are not on the board. That's not a board position.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
And since Collier's our neighbors, maybe if you can't go, call and I'll go to the meeting?
Okay.
So it could be the backup for you?
Well, I mean, if you want to go to the meetings, please do. Because I don't, I mean, you know, like Amy said, you get to talk for two minutes, you know, to sit there. You know, but I think that would be great because maybe the members that you don't know, you can get to know a little bit by going to the meetings, so that'd be wonderful.
So they run longer than you run a meeting?
They, well, they dissect the dissection, but, you know, there's only five of them to dissect the dissection, so it just depends.
But they're videoed too, so you don't even have to go, right?
What's that?
They're videoed also, aren't they?
The meetings are videoed, yes.
They're live streamed.
Yeah, they are. Yes, exactly, that's right. Okay, so Crew, we did Estero Liaison, the ECCL.
I'd like to do that.
Okay, Chris Corey. Fire Control District Liaison, and that was Laura.
Laura Carr.
Okay, congratulations. Florida League of Cities Liaison, and we had that as myself and Deputy Mayor Gibson. Mike?
I'll do it.
Yeah, I'm fine with staying on.
I'd like that too, actually, but, I mean, Simmons, I think, I mean, I think that you might, that's kind of like the counties. It's kind of weird to have you go off, I mean, in my opinion. I mean, it's one that I like, but I didn't, I wasn't necessarily, you know, I saw you and Mike were already there, but I think as a figurehead-
I mean, I'm active with them. I don't, you know, but-
So, I mean, why, I don't, it seems-
Well, you could always go. I mean, it's not-
Right.
Because, do we vote? Do we have a vote or something?
No, we do.
No, yeah.
No, there's no vote.
There is an annual vote, and only one of us can vote.
Okay.
Correct.
But all of us can go to the-
Fred, you're up.
Are we talking aroundabout way about Southwest Florida League of Cities chapter, or is that a different one?
That's a different one.
I think you might be better served to address those both together because it sounds like there are a lot of interests in there, and they are, they're two different levels. And so maybe if between each other, you could, the existing members could educate the remainder of the council. It'll make it easier in selecting who should remain and who might swap out for those roles.
Additionally, as you get closer to the annual conference, you all do elect your voting representative each year to that as well.
Counsel, what's your pleasure on the Florida League of Cities and the Southwest Florida League of Cities?
Well, I've got to, I have to, but here's, right now, I'm the voting member at Southwest League of Cities Chapter. You can have alternates come, but there's only one voting member. Voting members are eligible to be officers in the organization. By their bylaws, it was decided that they have four officers, secretary, treasurer, vice president, president. You start out at wherever you're at in that queue, or you get elected to the bottom as secretary. Every two years, you move up one seat. I'm currently the vice president of that organization. And so if you chose to pick another person, you don't walk into anything other than being a voting member. You have to, if you're lucky, you might at some point be elected to be secretary. So that, that's the only real reason that I need to be there, but if you want to change me out, whatever you want to do.
That's for the Southwest?
That's the Southwest Florida League of Cities Chapter.
Well, you're listed as an alternate. You're actually-
No, no, I'm the voting, I'm the voting member.
So we should change you to the voting member?
Yeah.
And we need an alternate now?
Yeah.
I'll be an alternate.
Good. Usually, we meet monthly, except for Covina is kind of dealt a bad hand. I think we're going to have a, we're going to have a Zoom meeting, but it's an executive committee.
And there again, those meetings are open, so we could go if we wanted, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So we missed a few.
No.
Fort Myers.
You're still at the League of Cities.
Yep, League of Cities. I'm happy to continue.
Okay.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gibson, if you want to keep it, go keep it. I'll just drive up with you.
What's that? I'm sorry.
I said then have Gibson, if he wants to be the other one, then fine. I'll just drive up with you guys. I don't need to vote.
Okay. No, absolutely. Where there's interest, everybody should attend.
Yeah, I'll just-
Fort Myers Beach Liaison, that was formerly Greg DeWitt.
I'll do it.
Okay.
You're going to be busy.
Horizon Council, Amy Caramba.
Yeah, I'd like to maintain that.
And Jesse, if you'd like to, or whoever, I'm trying to remember who expressed, yeah, expressed the interest, then please, that would be wonderful.
And let them know it's okay, because they invite, so.
Right. Okay, Human Services Advisory Council, Laura Carr. Okay, okay. All right, congratulations, Laura. Lee County Sheriff's Office Liaison.
That's-
Laura Carr.
Yeah, I do, I mean, I love it, so sure.
Okay, and Jesse, you have an interest?
Well, I mean, that's just one that I like, because I mean, I'm personally friends with the sheriff, and I talk to Blake Lee a lot, so like, I'm on top. You know, when we did the band show, for example-
So then you should do it.
You know, I love, I love the interaction, or like, with the police. I think it's one of the most important things for our downtown. That's why we did the award to them via outreach a year and a half ago, how they are with our kids down in Rosemary, so. I love the LCSO. I would love to be that person, but, thank you.
Jesse? Wonderful, thank you. MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, here, there's two voting members and an alternate.
I'd like to stay on as a voting member.
And I need to do the same thing because at the moment, I'm the chairman of the MPO through roughly the end of the year. So I should be, stay on it, but if not, what will happen, I believe, and Derek could illuminate it better, I think what happens if I'm not a voting member and not on the MPO, then what happens is probably Bill Ribble will be moved up ahead and get a longer term as chairman.
Yeah, I believe this chart is actually incorrect. I believe that the two voting members are Councilwoman Carr and Councilman Forbes. So we would be looking for two alternates, is really-
Two alternates?
Two alternates. We have two votes.
Two votes, two alternates.
All right.
It's not Simmons.
So Fred and Laura as the voting members, and who would like to serve as alternates? Chris? Okay, congratulations, Chris. Who else would like to be an alternate?
I could be an alternate.
Jesse? Congratulations. Okay, trying to, I don't know why I'm so worried about checking off the boxes here, because Arlene's going to have a clean list for us, but. Regional Planning Council, that was formerly Greg DeWitt.
Laura?
Go ahead.
Well, Laura took it, because-
Do you want it?
You want to do it, Jesse?
No, you go ahead, go ahead.
No, you do it. You do it. I rely.
You guys want to flip a coin, or are you good?
You do.
Okay.
Then if, you know, we run into trouble, we call it, we tell Arlene to call.
All right, so that's Jesse. Congratulations. Southwest, oh, we did that, I'm sorry, League of Cities, and the alternate Tourist Development Council.
Gibson.
And that is Mike Gibson.
Yeah, I'm on that one. I'd like to stay on that one.
Okay, Dynamite. Great job. West Coast Inland Navigation District, Laura Carr.
Okay, great.
All righty. Wonder Gardens Board, and that was formerly Peter O'Flynn. Chris?
That would be a liaison.
It's a liaison. It's not a board position.
Yeah. And Chris, you're going to do that?
Great. YMCA, Mike Gibson. Uh, YMCA, Mike Gibson.
Um, I, I'm on that currently, um, but if, uh, I'd, it's in Jesse's district, so I was gonna say.
It is district too, I love it, um, I just met the CEO last week, he's awesome, young guy, um, I'd love to, I'm gonna be working with a lot of the kids out there this summer anyway, so if I was liaison, it'd be a little bit more official, so, I'd love that.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, Jesse, congratulations.
Alright, we did it.
Did I miss anything?
No, I mean, just wanted to clarify, did we have a final determination for the Benita Astero Economic Development Council? We just, are we gonna revisit that with Tiffany, or do, who was the official liaison?
For what?
Benita, Benita Astero Economic Development Council.
I think that's me.
Jesse.
Jesse, is who I marked, is that right?
Well, we don't, there's no vote, right? You just attend.
No, there's no vote.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think we said that we were going to work it out somehow.
Well, you can notice the meeting.
And we could notice the meeting, and, and that's what you said, you're gonna notice the meeting.
So for now, we'll, we'll put both of you down.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Alright.
And can I go to the YMCA meetings? Is that a rate?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on committee assignments? Okay? Thanks, everybody. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Outstanding, okay. Is everybody doing okay? Do we need a quick break, or are we doing alright?
Doing.
Okay, Dynamite. Okay, um, Item Nine, um, and this is a public hearing where public comment is allowed, Derek Rooney.
And I'm gonna turn this one over to Ellie.
And to clarify, during the public meeting, we're gonna have an opportunity for folks to make comment on both of the items separately.
So all we need to ask is that when the public comes up to speak, they identify which particular grant request that their, their comment are on.
Wonderful, thank you. Hello, good morning.
Hi, good morning. Um, Ellie McEwen for the record, uh, Public Works staff member. This is, it, it's called a public hearing, but it really is, uh, collecting citizen participation. We have two grants that we're applying for utilizing Community Development Block, uh, Grant Disaster Recovery Funds, and those monies come from the Florida Department of in, uh, Economic Opportunity, D E O. Um, they currently have advertised a second round of infrastructure funds, uh, to the tune of about a hundred million dollars statewide. Uh, we are applying for two projects, uh, in the city of Benita. The first one is, uh, the Spring Creek Benita Golf Course Stormwater Improvement Project, and the other is, uh, the East Benita Stormwater Improvement Project. And the, the second project, you're probably better familiar with, uh, in that it's the BG Mines. We've, we've recognized that this particular project is more, uh, expansive than just a certain specific area in East Benita, so we would take into consideration, um, a wider area for improve, for stormwater improvement. And so one of the requirements for submitting the grant application is that we allow for citizens of our community to comment, either support or oppose. Uh, we have to, uh, show the, um, the comments in our grant application. The grant is due on, uh, June 30th, and, um, so with that, I'm gonna stop talking, and I'm gonna ask the public, uh, again, as Arlene said, we'll take comments first of all for the Spring Creek, uh, Benita Golf Course Project, and then we'll take comments for, um, for the East Benita.
Members, the comments, thoughts, miscellaneous?
Keep up the good work.
Dissection. Dissection of the dissection, okay, I don't see any, I'm just trying to, filibustering here to allow time for anybody. Ellie?
I was just gonna say, if there are no comments, that is a comment, so...
There you go.
It's okay not to have comments.
Congratulations. Where, where words matter and where words matter. Where words don't matter.
Exactly.
So we need a motion?
Uh, not necessarily, no.
Okay.
Just a public hearing, correct, just a public hearing.
Everything okay?
Thank you for your effort.
Wonderful.
Excellent job.
Thank you very much, yes, great job. Okay, and now we're gonna move on to regular public comment. If there's members of the public that would like to speak?
We have two...
At this time?
We have two vacations that are both public hearings, uh, I'm sorry, they were by addendum. So you have the first, the first next item before you get to the public comment, although the public is obviously, uh, welcome to comment on this, is a vacation of a portion of a public utility easement and public right of way in Burnwood Park of Commerce. I think Jay is staff on this one.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, for the record, Jay Smith, Community Development. We have two vacations before you, the first one is in the Burgren Park of Commerce. Uh, it is, they're combining two lots, there's some easements that overlap, and it's a very minor, I think one's 34 square feet, a very small, uh, vacations that are publicly dedicated, so that it will facilitate the, uh, the development of the two lots in combination versus two separate lots. And there is, uh, all utilities have been notified, uh, city's looked at it, and we have no objection to it.
Great. So I make a motion to...
Second.
Approve. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. And anybody else, Derek from the public, or anybody else that would like to speak?
If there's anyone from the public here to speak on it.
Okay, seeing none, there's been a motion and a second, council is a further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, next item, C.
The next item is also a vacation of a public utility easement, this one is adjacent to the Pelican Nest Clubhouse, uh, which just recently reopened, um, and Jay's here to speak on that one as well.
So, so briefly, in this instance, there was many easements that need to be vacated, most were privately held, between the club and the different associations, the club association, owner's association, and so forth. I wish they could all do internally, there was one public easement that the spring's utility had a line in, that line needed to be relocated, which it has been, uh, with that BSU has, said they have no objection to it, none of the utilities had objection to it, and it is not a full vacation, but only the portion where the building would encroach. So it's a very, again, very minor vacation, but since it is a public dedicated utility easement, it requires to be vacated this manner. Uh, staff, none of the utilities had objection, the staff has no objection.
Great.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second, council is a further discussion, or members of the public is a further discussion, or comment. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Great, thank you. Derek?
Thank you. The next item is a resolution continuing the authorization for temporary outdoor seating as a result of, uh, coronavirus. As you've probably seen, the governor's, uh, subsequent executive orders have expanded, uh, food service interior to, uh, restaurants and bars to up to 50% capacity, uh, but 50% capacity is still not enough for many restaurants, and so we have provided the safe harbor to allow, uh, outdoor seating with registration to the city, um, we do not have to change those rules in any way, but we did make this a 45-day look back, so we'd be asking you to extend it for another 45-day period. I so move.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second, council is a further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
I'd like to make a comment. Uh, really, I think we're gonna need to be looking at this a lot longer than 45 days, because right now, in the off-season, which was what we're in, the 50% works. When the stuff's gonna hit the fan is when we get back into the high season. If they've not increased capacity of the restaurants, and it may not happen, then we're gonna have to do something here to extend it.
Uh, perhaps what we could do is, I could get with staff, both code enforcement and community development, before the next extension, and see how many people have availed themselves to this opportunity, and maybe get an idea from those users, what they're looking for as far as timeframes, if we want to look at expanding it further to allow the, the local businesses to invest in additional outdoor seating.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a great idea, Derek, I think one thing we're gonna need to look at, first of all, I think most of the restaurants that might avail themselves believe that it's gonna go away, and I think that's optimistic, I, I want to be optimistic, but I want to be realistic, but I think the one problem we're gonna have is, many of these restaurants, if they expand, are gonna impinge the required number of parking, so we need, may need to look at, is that feasible on a temporary basis, and if so, how much, or something like that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, the next item is, similarly, is a, an extension, uh, we had, uh, we have been having some advisory board member, uh, meetings, uh, virtually, uh, yesterday we had a successful zoning board meeting that went most of the day. We are allowed to continue that process as long as the governor's executive order is in place, um, we have also made that a 45-day window, so I'm looking to extend that, the, currently the governor's order should expire on July 4th, but I have full expectations that it'll be extended as well, so this would continue our use of virtual meetings for the advisory boards for another 45 days, um, unless ended earlier by the governor's actions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and to approve and a second, council is a further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Since I disagree with the premise, no.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I, um, the executive session on the WCI attorney's fees, that I discussed the last meeting, I'm still looking at dates to put that together, I'm waiting to get a little bit more backup information on the current state of the fees, and trying to whittle those numbers down from WCI before scheduling that, uh, but I expect to have it in the next month. Additionally, I will have at your next meeting, hopefully, some revisions, uh, working with Councilwoman Caramba on the advisory board, uh, rules and procedures to deal with some of the issues we've had over the last couple meetings. And that's it.
Okay, great, Derek, thank you. Arlene?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just as a reminder, many of you might have seen the press release yesterday, we want to make sure all of our residents and then business owner residents are aware that Lee County Commissioners approved yesterday, uh, the continuation Phase Two of the CARES funds through Lee County. Those opportunities are there for our, our resident business owners and residents, uh, to take advantage of, uh, opportunities for reimbursement of, um, harm they may have received during the COVID-19 event. Additionally, we have been made aware that there will be an individual allocation to the city for CDBG, DR, COVID, response to COVID funds, um, and so we will be getting that allocation through Lee County, approximately $200,000. We will have to find, um, feasible and, uh, approved uses, it has to, uh, it has to benefit our low to moderate income citizens, so we'll be looking at, uh, approved processes for that, working with the county and bringing back some proposals to that effect.
Okay. Great, anything else?
Um, I will be out of the office next week, but Matt will be at the helm, should you need anything.
Wonderful. Matt, do you have anything to add? No? Okay.
Are we partying? Are we partying as soon as Arlene takes off? Call us, let us know.
Okay, thanks, everybody, we're now gonna move on to mayor and council reports, Fred Forbes.
Yeah, I think I just gave, uh, one of the highlights, which is about the BSU, they, that's a great thing they've done, it's cost them a lot of money out of their pocket, to develop shovel-ready drawings, to convert septic tanks into DRGRs, they deserve a salute from all of us. I think that's it.
Great, thank you, Fred. Mike?
Um, no, mainly, um, just the zoning meeting that we're gonna have later today, if there's any other way that we can either go back to Mondays, or, um, have it earlier than at 1:00, um, cause obviously, we're gonna have a gap in between these meetings now, um, so...
No, I'm with you, these, these staggered things kill the working people, they really do, but, so what, what are your thoughts there? We're gonna, we're gonna start at 1:00 today?
We're starting at 1:00, we've been advertising them for a time certain, uh, in the past, we've generally run right up against that 1:00, but if our meetings get more efficient, what we could do is we could shift it to 9:00 and advertise it, it'll just be that the public who shows up for those hearings will have to wait until the conclusion, or the alternative, if there's a significant number of public who show up at 9:00, you may want to reorder your agenda at that time and take those land use items first, but it's certainly up to you. So...
Mike?
I, yeah, clear as mud, I'm sorry.
Sure, so that, so we, we, we had three meetings a month, with land use being on a separate day on a Monday. The council directed us to move to two days a month, uh, but because we have our regular agenda and then a land use agenda, the land use agenda generally bringing out more public to attend, it was decided to break the day up so that the public who came for the land use items, particularly those contentious ones, did not have to sit through the entire public hearing, uh, all your regular agenda items, they could just show up at 1:00 when their hearings were called. Now, what we could do in the future is we could just say everything's at 9:00, and move through your agenda, then immediately move right into the land use items, and if worst-case scenario occurs where there's a lot of public for, for something, you could always move that item first on the agenda and move your regular agenda items behind that, so you have a lot of flexibility, if that's how you'd prefer for us to go forward, or go back to the Monday meetings.
The, the only thing with the land use is you usually have, um, lawyers, engineers, people that are being paid hourly, um, so I think it'd be better if we shifted that earlier, maybe if we opened the meeting and did public comment for the meeting, just so
until the conclusion. Or, I mean, alternative, if there's a significant number of public who show up at 9 o'clock, you may wanna reorder your agenda at that time and take those land use items first. But it's certainly up to you. So-
Mike?
Right, yeah, clear as mud, I'm sorry.
Sure, so that, so we, 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 we had three meetings a month, with land use being on a separate day on a Monday. The council directed us to move to two days a month. Uh, but because we have our regular agenda and then a land use agenda, the land use agenda generally bringing out more public to attend, it was decided to break the day up so that the public who came for the land use items, particularly those contentious ones, did not have to sit through the entire public hearing. Uh, all your regular agenda items, they could just show up at 1 o'clock when their hearings were called. Now, what we could do in the future is we could just say everything's at 9 o'clock and move through your agenda, then immediately move right into the land use items. And if worst-case scenario occurs where there's a lot of public for, for something, you could always move that item first on the agenda and move your regular agenda items behind that. So you have a lot of flexibility, if that's how you'd prefer for us to go forward or go back to the Monday meetings.
The, the only thing with the land use is you usually have, um, lawyers, engineers, people that are being paid hourly. Um, so I think it'd be better if we shifted that earlier. Maybe if we opened the meeting and did public comment for the meeting, just so that way if public wanted to come make a comment about, you know, the regular meeting, they could get that out of the way, shift into the, the zoning, get that out of the way, and then go back to our meeting. That way, when it's done, it's done.
You could do that.
Yeah, and I think that makes sense. Council, what do you? I agree.
I agree.
So maybe we could do your normal roll call invocation, and maybe do the consent agenda first, then go right into the public hearings on land use, then roll into proclamations. I mean, just trying to get an idea so we can get this scheduled as soon as possible.
I think also what Councilman Gibson was saying is that you would allow for public comment on any agenda item. You have folks who come at the beginning of the meeting just to give a public comment and cannot stay through the whole meeting.
Right.
Yeah, that has problems with quasi-judicial, though. You can do that, but then they're not subject to cross-examination, and, and it could, it could affect their rights, so.
But, so the public comment could be on anything except for the, the land use things that are-
Right.
Yeah, but then they, but I think you were asking specifically about the costs to applicants to having their, or even objectors to having their whole team paid by the hour sitting through the- So I, I, I thought that the request was to move the land use items to the front of the agenda. If you were willing to do that, the other item we could consider is not having land use specific days as well, and just having land use items on any agenda as we roll through to keep-
Right.
I think that makes sense.
I think that makes more sense.
I, I'd look to staff to make sure that that doesn't make their job harder or easier, but, um...
On the days when we're already here, and times we're already here, I think makes a lot more sense.
Question, would, if we do that, which I like, is when would the land use, would it be number one on the agenda?
That's what, that's, that's what my clarification was. Would you want it to be before consent and everything else, or would you?
I, I think it does, because you can't predict how long some of these discussions can go. And I think it needs to happen before the general public comment on our meeting, because if you have a contentious issue on the agenda, you could spend an hour and a half in public comment. It's happened in the past.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I will just reiterate, though, for the folks that are in the working world, these odd days and odd times are difficult. So I really, um, support what Councilman Gibson's saying. So what, council, what, what, what would we like to do, bottom line?
I think let staff think about it and work something out.
One thing I might recommend, only because it came up at the charter, uh, review, which is making sure that at least one of the land use items occurs at an evening meeting. So even if we have a rolling process where we have land use items particularly being considered at any meeting, at least one of them should be after 5 o'clock for those people who do work, who cannot make the earlier meetings. They have an opportunity to get their comment on the record, whether it's the final hearing or it's the first hearing, uh, but something to that effect.
And, and it would be same deal, first thing on the, the docket. So we don't, uh, and we can always terminate some part of the regular meeting, but we can't do it with that.
Now, what's it gonna take for me to get you guys down to one meeting a month?
I'm there.
So what, so what is-
As long as it's an evening.
What's our status for today?
It's still at 1 o'clock, 'cause it's advertised for 1 o'clock.
And we're gonna meet here at 1 o'clock?
Right, but I think that we're getting lunch brought in, so-
We, we, we weren't, we, our previous meetings have all run up right to the time, so we did have lunch brought in for you today.
And, and obviously, I think, master the obvious, but there's no way to start it earlier, 'cause this meeting's just about over. So we got a two-hour lag.
I could talk for a half hour if you want. Do I listen?
We expected more wrangling over this.
And I know that's hard, believe me. It's hard to predict times. It's hard to schedule conference calls when you're on this board and, and, and working things too. So I get it. Believe me, I get it. I know Mike gets it, too. Okay, uh, so 1 o'clock today, and we're gonna figure it out moving forward, but to try to expedite it and make it less days and less odd times. Okay. Does that sound good, everybody?
Yes, sir.
As good as it can sound? Okay. Um, Mike, I think you did, you just spoke. Okay, thank you, Mike. Anything else? Okay, Chris? Chris, you're good? Okay.
I'm good.
Laura?
Nope.
Jessie?
Nothing.
Jessie?
Nope.
Amy?
Okay, I just wanna say something that is kind of light. And that is because, um, I was watching TV like everybody else does while we're being, uh, sheltering in place, and the Metropolitan Opera House had a streaming of their, um, gala, which raises money. And the reason why I'm bringing it up, because it starts out with an illustration of the world map. And it shows, you know, Europe and U, US and everything. And then there's these tracers that go from the places where various Metropolitan Opera stars are sheltering in place. And they were, and then it showed them going into New York. So it started out with Lugano, um, Venice, Rome, Germany, Switzerland, and up pops the screen, Benita Springs. We had, honestly, so it was so cool to see Benita Springs, Florida, and we had, uh, an international opera star sheltering in place in the colony in my community. And they all sang their little arias. And, um, I would just wanted to say, Benis, Benita Springs is on the map, and it was for a happy occasion, and, um, it, it was kinda cool. So if they do a reprise, you should look at it just to see that beginning part where they started to have all these really kinda cool places in, all over the world. And then Benita Springs, Florida. It was such a surprise, but it was cool.
So where is it? How do you do?
Well, you'd probably have to go onto MetropolitanOpera.org and see if-
Okay.
They just did it recently, but, um, I'm sure they'll do it again, because they're trying to raise money. But it had like a dozen or so opera stars from all over the world, and there was Benita Springs. He happened to be here because his mother lives in the colony, and he got stuck here. He was quarantined. And that's why he gave his aria out of the colony here in Benita Springs. So it was cool.
Nice. Thank you, Amy.
We have a famous trumpet player in our neighborhood, and every day at 5, at 6 o'clock, he'll come out and play. It's really beautiful.
That's great. That's great. Okay, I guess sum up, and bear with me. I do have a few things to say. So I wanna start by saying, um, thank you to Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson, Councilman Jessie Purdon, Councilwoman Amy Karamba, and Councilwoman Laura Carr, Senator Rick Scott, Congressman Francis Rooney, Sheriff Carmine Marcino, Sheriff Mike Scott, Mayor Kevin Ruane of Sanibel, Mayor Randy Henderson of Fort Myers, Mayor Bill Ribble of Estero, Mayor Ray Murphy of Fort Myers Beach, Mayor Nancy Pravky of Punta Gorda, and even Mayor Marty Walsh of Boston, who thinks of me as his Republican friend from New Hampshire, even though I'm very much from Benita Springs, Florida. Lee County Commissioner Ray Sandelli, Lee County Commissioner Cecil Pendergrass, Mayor Terrell Hill, Mayor Matt Surancy, Senator Joe Gruters and Chairman of the Republican Party of Florida, Lee County School Board Member Gwyn Gittens, Lee County School Board Member Melissa Watts Giavennelli, Fort Myers City Councilwoman Teresa Watkins Brown, Colonel Drew Kelly with the United States Army Corps of Engineers, Lieutenant Colonel Todd Polk with the United States Army Corps of Engineers, Former Secretary of State and Congresswoman Candace Miller of Michigan, Former Secretary of State Terry Lynn Land of Michigan, State Representative Byron Donalds, Former Senate Majority Leader Mike Heradopoulos of the state of Florida, State Representative Bob Rommel, State Representative Heather Fithzenhagen, Senator Lizbeth Benequisto of Florida, Tiffany Esposito from the Benita Springs Chamber, Terry Lemain from the Benita Springs Assistance Office, Ben Hirschenson, Trish Leonard, Tom Heckere of the Wonder Gardens, Don Thompson, Dave Elias for NBC2, Alex Howard from NBC2, Devin Turk from NBC2, Jacob Ogles with Florida Politics, Andrew Clark with Wink News, and Pace and Gaddis of Florida Weekly. I'd like to read what I sent out on Friday afternoon. Mayor Peter Simmons thanks residents of Benita Springs for the privilege of serving the city for eight years. June 12th, 2020, Benita Springs, Florida. Mayor Peter Simmons today thanked the residents of Benita Springs for the honor of serving an elected office for the past eight years and announced that he will not seek an additional four-year term. Having been elected to the Benita Springs City Council from District Four in 2012 and as mayor of Benita Springs in 2016, I am honored and proud to have served the residents of Benita Springs. I hit the ground running, fighting for clean water, protecting the environment, and successfully leading the opposition of a homeless shelter being proposed to go next door to our Children's Charter Elementary School on Old 41. Soon after, the environmentally sensitive density-reduction groundwater resource DRGR area was under attack, and business, businesses on Benita Beach Road 41 intersection were threatened by a proposed flyover. Once again, I am proud to have stepped up and led successful efforts to preserve and protect those areas of our city. Immediately after being elected mayor, I created the Diversity Outreach Committee to better serve our minority population in Benita Springs, which comprises roughly 25% of our nearly 60,000 residents. Through this committee, we established a sister-city program with Isla Mihary's Mexico, created an International Mayor's Cup Soccer Tournament, and established Fiesta Benita. As a member of the Board of Directors with the Florida League of Mayors and member of the United States Conference of Mayors, I am proud to have led and co-sponsored numerous legislative initiatives over the years on behalf of our environment. This culminated with a prime, with my primary sponsorship of Resolution 60, resulting in over $200 million of funding for the Florida Everglades from the, for the Florida Everglades from the United States Congress. Resolution 60 passed unanimously and was adopted by over a thousand mayors representing all 50 states at the United States Conference of Mayors in July of 2019. Our environment is our economy, and our economy is our environment. I am proud, along with Governor Ron DeSantis, to be a Teddy Roosevelt Republican. I initiated term limits in Benita Springs, which was placed on the ballot and approved by 87% of our voters, firmly believing that if our president, governor, attorney general, state senators, state representatives, and others are limited to eight years in office, I would highly encourage future city councils to make further term limit reforms in Benita Springs. I am proud to have honored and embraced our veterans, held the line with no increased taxes during my eight years in office, led extensive beautification efforts around our city, including downtown Old 41, proudly embracing our historical past and looking to our future for our walkable and bikeable downtown Benita Springs. Walked the Quinn Street, Dean Street neighborhood for a month after Hurricane Irma, helping residents, and I am proud to have secured almost $30 million in environmental grant funding for our beloved Benita Springs. For those individuals who know me, that truly know me, they understand that I look forward to not missing any future father-daughter events and parents' weekends at Florida State University in Tallahassee or any of our son's home or road college football games starting the fall of 2021. On behalf of my wife Suzanne, daughter Elizabeth, and son Peter,